September 17th, regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekka? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor Odweire?
Here. The first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve with the following amendments, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to add proclamation 04-12 to the consent agenda as item number two. And I'd like to add to the regular agenda, motion M61-12 as item number 13 on the regular agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Any additional changes? Hearing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. And I don't see Reverend Brayley here, so we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Dave Hurst, and I'm a resident here of Berkeley. I am a member of the Berkeley Environmental Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to remind folks that we're out there, and we're doing some good work, and talk a little bit, very briefly, about what we do. Our job is to research and recommend ways to improve the city's environmental impact. We have three committees that we split ourselves into: a recycling committee, energy efficiency, and transportation. In each of those, we have different things that are going on, and we're going to be making more of an effort to come to city council meetings to help inform you guys, as well as help inform the community of things that are going on. Most immediately, you're going to be hearing about our Recycler of the Year program coming up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you to the Environmental Committee for all you do. Since there are no others coming to the microphone, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on August 20, 2012, and item number two, proclamation P04-12, matter of proclaiming September 17, 2012, as Citizenship Day, and September 17 through the 23rd is Constitution Week.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Now we come to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Mayor Protem Turbrak to read proclamation 04-12.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming September 17, 2012, as Citizenship Day, and September 17 through 23, 2012, as Constitution Week. Whereas, we the people did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity; and whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution, so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment; and whereas the President and the Congress of the United States have designated September 17 as Citizenship Day and the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week; and whereas Constitution Week and Citizenship Day provide the opportunity for all Americans to learn and to reflect upon the rights and privilegess of citizenship and its responsibilities; and whereas the people of the City of Berkeley do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and the freedoms derived from it. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims Section 1, that September 17, 2012, is designated as Citizenship Day and the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2012, as Constitution Week, and invites every citizen and institution to join in the national commemoration. Proclaim the 17th day of September, 2012, at a regular meeting of the city council. Phil Odweire, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M5312, matter of appointing Tim Goddett to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term expiring July 2014.
Is there a motion to approve M5312?
Motion to approve 5312.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just to give you a little bit of background on Mr. Goddett, I'm pleased to inform you that he is a corporate director, and his field of specialty is in human resources, which he has worked in that field for about 20-plus years. He has lived in the City of Berkeley for 11 years, and he has also been a member of the Cruz Fest Committee, and also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee member as well. One of the things that I enjoyed reading in his application was his statement where he indicates that he has a strong belief that our community is what we residents make it. He writes, "While roads, public safety, and public works are all very important to our community, it's the people, neighborhoods, and value that add aspects such as our library, Parks and Recreation, Community Center, and senior programs," to name only a few, "that top off the quality of life that makes Berkeley a great place to live in." So I concur with him completely. So with that, Your Honor, I don't think Mr. Goddett is with us this evening, but certainly we do recommend his appointment for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Goddett is not with us because he's in Houston on business. It turns out I had an email from him over the weekend that he had to be there for business, so otherwise he would have been here to answer any questions. Is there any discussion on this nominee? Hearing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M5312?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M5412, matter of appointing Anella Mihayescu and Dan Mihayescu to the Beautification Advisory Committee with terms expiring July 2015.
Is there a motion to approve M5412?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Sessa?
Council, here again. I'm so happy and excited that these two individuals will be joining the Beautification Committee. Of course, it depends on council's final approval, but again, I do recommend them for your consideration. Just to give you a little bit of background on Anella, and I hope I pronounced her last name correctly, Mihayescu, she is a student of pharmacy. She has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for two years. Again, I love her statement when she states that she loves the city and does not wish to move from it. Therefore, she wants to volunteer her time and become a member of this committee to improve the beauty of our city. The next individual that we're also considering, Daniel Mihayescu, is her husband. And just a little bit about him, he works in the field of finance, and now, in his case, he has been a Berkeley resident for 37 years, so he's a longtime resident. He also has a completed coursework for Master Gardener Program via the MSU Extension Office in Oakland County, and so I'm very anxious to work with him as well in this committee. So with that, Your Honor, if there are any questions, we are recommending both of these individuals for council consideration.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M5412?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. We are thankful for all the volunteers who are putting their names forward for the many committees in the city, and so we especially thank you both this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I don't know if she wanted to say anything herself, because she is here.
Oh, I'm just excited. I didn't know what to expect.
Can you just come to the podium? I'm sorry.
Sure.
That'd be great. Gave you a little bit of experience, you know?
Hi, everybody. As you said, my name was right. It was Anella Mihayescu. My husband is actually home with our son right now, so he couldn't join us. He's our only babysitter. But he kind of pushed me forward to do this because he loves landscaping and taking care of everything in his house, so I'm glad I'm here. And like he said, I do not want to move. Every time we improve in our house, he's like, "Are you sure you want to stay here?" I'm like, "Absolutely." So I'm happy to volunteer my time to improve the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M5512, matter of authorizing the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive from October 5 through the 7, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve M5512?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support from Mayor Protem Turbrak. Ms. Sessa?
Council, on this item, I do believe that it is something that you consider on an annual basis, and while I don't have, unfortunately, all the backup on this, but my understanding is that they will be at the same places that they've been in the past. Their collections will start at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, and they will conclude by 6:00 p.m. on the indicated dates. Again, this is a statewide fundraiser to assist in their main charity, and that is to help those less fortunate. Be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor. I do know that our Public Safety Director is here, and he also recommends this for your consideration.
Very good. Any discussion? Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M5512?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number five, please?
Motion number M5612, matter of authorizing Our Lady of La Salette Church Fall Fest Fun Run on September 23, 2012, from 8:30 a.m. until 10 o'clock a.m.
Is there a motion to approve M5612?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa?
Council, I don't know if there's anybody here, but I did meet, had the privilege of meeting with Ms. Kathy Fox last week on this issue. She did provide, and I think it's in front of you, a copy of the route. It's something, again, that we do on an annual basis with them. Our Public Safety has no problem in helping them with this race. Just to give you a little bit of information on the race, it will include a 5K and a one-mile fun run, and it will conclude, it looks like here, about 10:00 a.m. in the morning. The cost for participating in this race is about $10 for the one mile and $15 for the 5K. There are registration forms at the church if anyone is interested. Again, all the proceeds for this race will go to support the Our Lady of La Salette General Fund. This is a good thing, and we certainly recommend it. Any questions, I'd do my best to answer them.
Any discussion on this item? Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please read, call the roll, on M5612?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six?
Resolution number R3612, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, authorizing the West Nile virus expense reimbursement request.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 3612?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa?
Council, in order so that we can receive our dollars for the West Nile virus, and you can see the memorandum that was put together by our Public Works Director, Derek Schuler, who is here with us this evening, and I'll ask him perhaps to come in and explain exactly how this program works. We are required to have council approve a resolution. And with that, Mr. Schuler, can you please explain very briefly how this is going to work, please, sir?
Sure. This is a yearly program through Oakland County where we get reimbursed presently just for our material costs, which is essentially the larvicide briquettes that we place in the 1,500 or so catch basins throughout the city. That's done in May. It's a 150-day residual, so it takes us all the way through the summer months. And right now, the county is reimbursing the cost of those briquettes, and you can see on my memo the total costs involved, but it's been a worthwhile program. It's something I've been involved with, with my previous employer as well, and really, the larvicide is the most fundamental way of limiting the Culex mosquito population, which is the one that causes the West Nile virus, and at least treating those catch basins that are within our right-of-way. Obviously, private property is a different story, but to treat all of our catch basins in the City of Berkeley, I think, is pretty impressive.
Any questions for Derek? Councilmember Platt Onson?
Quick, so it looks like in 2004, we were getting just over $5,000 in reimbursement. This year, it looks like we're getting about $2,000.
Yeah.
Where, what's happening in that trend?
They're changing, their funding, it's ironic, but with the West Nile virus this year, getting a lot of attention with the numbers up, but the county has been cutting back that program every year. In fact, my discussions with them last year, they were worried that they would not get funding again this year, so the fear is, at some point, this program will go away. So they've been just cutting at it piece by piece every year. It is based on miles of road and population, so those factors could come into play as well, but my experience has been, they just kind of keep limiting the amount, and I think we used to be able to get some labor paid for, and now it's strictly just the material costs.
Okay, and so we're doing about $2,000 in materials. Looks like we've got another $36,000. What does that go to in the program?
Sure. That's cleaning all of the catch basins, so before the larvicide briquette is placed in the catch basin, we suck all the material out of the catch basin so that it is clean when we drop the briquette in, so that it's more effective working, and that helps us in other ways, too. So the reason you see that number is that that includes the catch basin cleaning that occurs before the briquette is actually even placed in the catch basin, and those costs.
Okay, so we're looking at, we're spending $36,000 to make sure our residents are safe. This might be a good opportunity to remind people to do their part. I've seen some small children's pools with standing water and yards and things like that, so if we're going to spend $36,000 of taxpayer money to try to make sure they're safe, we need everybody to remember that it's typically areas of standing water, correct?
Any standing water, correct. The particular West Nile mosquito, the Culex mosquito, though, does like the catch basin environment as opposed to the kiddie pool environment, so that it is important for us to treat those catch basins as well, but you're absolutely correct. They can breed in any standing water.
Thanks.
Ms. Sessa?
Your Honor, one of the things that I've done in order to make sure that we inform our residents, we've done a couple of things. One, we placed it on our website to do some of the things that you're concerned about, Councilmember, and there are brochures available at our front desk as well, that they've handed out for us to give as well, on how to address this issue. Things like, you know, wearing the proper long-sleeved type of shirts and socks and things like that when you go onto wooded areas, and make sure you put the proper insecticides, things of that nature. But the other thing that I've done is, through our website, periodically, we do an email blast, and we send out information from the county about this, and letting people know again to be careful and avoid, you know, this type of issue by, again, you know, being careful as to wearing the proper clothing and all that kind of stuff. So those are some of the things that I've taken in order to inform our residents about this issue.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilmember Baker?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you so much for your presentation and for helping keep this agenda going forward in terms of protecting the residents and the systems. Just to be clear, I mean, this is, the catch basins that you describe are quote-unquote downstream from the residents' water in terms of their consumption inside their household, right? So what we're not seeking to do is treat anything before the residents use it. Obviously, it's afterwards part of the sewage system.
Correct. This is all the drainage structures within the roadway. You are correct.
Right, that's right. And following up on the conversation from a moment ago, as far as the allocation of funding to help us offset some of the labor, so when we describe the funding that we had received in the past to help us cover our costs, and we're having less funds coming in this time around, we're still going to do the same amount of work, right? To your point, the amount of sewers that we have hasn't changed, and the amount of catch basins hasn't changed, it's just the amount of reimbursement has changed.
Absolutely. And the catch basin cleaning, you know, that's important for me to point out, is something that I would do regardless of the West Nile, so it's a good activity for us to do, and it's included here as part of those costs, but it's something that I would encourage as a regular maintenance program as well, so, and that's a big part of that cost.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. As I looked at your report, I knew that my colleagues would be very quick to see, once again, a cut in revenue coming from somewhere. It seems to be a pattern up here, that every time money is coming from the federal government, the state, or the county, it's less and less and less, and it makes it so much more important that the residents of our city were so wise last month in voting for that millage.
You are correct.
Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R3612?
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M5712, matter of appointing Councilmember Steve Baker as the designate for the City of Berkeley, and Councilmember Alan H. Kadekka as the alternate to the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting at Mackinac Island from October 3 through the 5, 2012.
Is there a motion to approve M5712?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Sessa?
Council, I really don't have much more to say, except that I do concur with the recommendation for our residents out there. When the city council attends these types of meetings, at the convention, they are required to participate in some decision-making activities out there. For one, they're going to be electing some new trustees. Second, they're going to take a look at their core legislative principles document. They're recommending some amendments there as well. And then, any other business that may come before the Michigan Municipal League's board will also be taken at that time. So the cities come together with their representatives and help them make some decisions with this endeavor. So it's an important position, and I thank both of the council members for taking on this responsibility. So thank you.
Ms. Sessa, would you take a moment and tell the community who the Michigan Municipal League is?
Who the Michigan Municipal League is?
MML.
MML. Who they?
Are.
Who they are?
What do they do?
What do they do?
Oh, okay.
You don't have to list their names.
Oh, we weren't asking for a name. A roll call.
Whoa. Well, the Michigan Municipal League is an organization that represents, I would say, the majority of the member cities, townships, villages in our state, and they come together to address legislative issues that are happening in today's environment. They also help one another as to how to address any concerns that the cities are having, you know, similar concerns such as budgetary issues, sewer problems, public safety issues, things of that nature, and so we all learn from one another. And when we attend this conference, it helps us all to gain knowledge on some of the day-to-day activities that cities are going through for right now. So it's a tremendous organization, and certainly one that I'm glad that we're a member of.
And it's an opportunity for us to learn best practices.
Best practices, definitely, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baker?
Oh, yes, thank you, Your Honor. I will be voting in support of this today, but in all honesty, so I've been involved in several of the committees with the Michigan Municipal League for the last couple of years, and would be very pleased to help represent this body in that setting coming up in a couple of weeks. As was described by the city manager, the notion of the legislative governance agenda is going to be set for the coming year, and one of the things that Michigan Municipal League does, in addition to sharing best practices and opportunities to network and communicate with one another, is a strong advocacy of voice on behalf of our communities. So much as we are here to help serve the needs and desires and aspirations of the residents of the City of Berkeley, the Michigan Municipal League is there to represent the cities and towns across the state, and so it's important for us to have a voice at that table to describe our thoughts about issues that work at the state level and beyond, so if granted the opportunity, I'd be pleased to serve. Thank you.
Are you going to say anything else?
No, I'm looking forward to it. Every year, there's a parade of flags, and in the past, I've had the pleasure of representing the city, bringing the flag there. It's ceremonial, and what it does is it gives each community an opportunity to be recognized and celebrated as part of the community of municipalities across the state, and again, if that opportunity presents itself as well, I'd be glad to help do that also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M5712?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M5812, matter of appointing the Assistant to the City Manager Darshel Strickland-Love as the City of Berkeley's representative and Information Technology Coordinator Casey O'Neill as the alternate representative to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority Board, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the ICCA Board.
Is there a motion to approve M5812?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Ms. Sessa?
Council, this is an administrative requirement for us, so we're making some changes, as you all know. My former assistant, Theresa McCarleton, is obviously no longer a member of my direct team. Part of the city manager's operations is also to deal with communications such as cable and IT, and the cable function, such as tonight, the fact that we are able to broadcast this television to our residents, that's all done through the auspices of our cable communications agreement that we have, and so it's a very, very important function. And I'd like to recommend to the city council that they consider my new assistant, Darshel Strickland-Love, as the new rep for this, but she will come back periodically to give us reports. If there's any major decisions that have to be made, she will come back to either myself, or I will come back to the city council, or things of that nature. One item in particular that's really important is whenever we do the franchise agreements for cable, and those are things that they do monitor, and all the cities, at least in southeast Michigan, are members of this organization. So again, we do recommend this appointment.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M5812?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R 3912, matter of approving a memorandum of understanding Public Safety Or, I'm sorry, PSO Command and Public Safety Officer Union, City of Berkeley Public Safety Retirement System.
Is there a motion to approve R 3912?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support from Mayor Protam Turbrack. Mr. Sessa?
Council, this is something that is required by the IRS in order for us to ensure that we still have a qualified pension system, system, under section 401A of the IRS code. This is a determination that's required every five years in order so that we can maintain the tax-exempt status of the City of Berkeley's public safety pension, and all pension systems in general. This is, a report was put together by our finance director, Mr. David Sabuda. Again, this is a direction that's required for the city council to consider. He has provided you with, I believe, the proper documentation that you'll need in order to see what we do. But having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sabuda to see if he'd like to add anything else. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. Sessa. Good evening, Your Honor, councilmembers. Before you tonight is two memorandums of understanding. The unions have executed the memorandums of understanding. Legal counsel for the pension system has reviewed and approved the language, as has Labor Council. The board, the pension board, has also approved the two memorandums of understanding. They've seen them, they've discussed them, and have, and are now, have dealt with their membership in order to get these documents approved. Failure to execute the documents, we could be subject to fines and penalties underneath the Internal Revenue Service Code. This will not change any way, shape, or form how a pension is calculated, or what's been bargained. This is strictly defining compensation and caps compensation limits as defined under section 415A of the Internal Revenue Code. That is all. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the board may, the council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Sabuda? I think this is something we've done in the past, several years ago.
Yes, it has.
Correct. Seeing no, no other questions? No other questions, then. Ms. Prince, would you please read, call the roll on R 3912?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 6012, matter of approving the renewal of a warranty on the digital in-car cameras, period of 8/9/12 through 8/8/13, and related server, period 8/9/12 through 6/5/13, with L3 Communications Mobile Vision, Inc., at the cost of $3,800 for warranty on the in-car cameras, and $2,704.17 for warranty on the server.
Is there a motion to approve M 6012?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Mayor Protam Turbrack. Mr. Sessa?
Council, the only thing I'd like to add is that, obviously, these two warranty extensions are very much needed. If we add these two items together, it comes over to a total cost of about $6,504.17. Funds are available in order to pay for these items. But what I'd now like to ask, and I hate to put him on the spot, is our Director of Public Safety, Chief Eschman, to just simply explain exactly what these in-car system cameras do. Thank you, Chief.
The in-car cameras are simply a system that we digitally, audio-wise and video-wise, record what the officers do. It's good evidentiary-wise, it's good for a lot of purposes, finding out what happened at incidents, or complaints, and we can ascertain exactly what did, in fact, happen. We've had cameras for years, probably, I think the department's had it for 10 years. This particular system was purchased in 2008. So we record everything we do in the marked cars, not detective cars.
Mayor Protam Turbrack?
Just a comment, Chief. For the residents watching this, the original cost of this equipment was $62,000 total. So that's why we are paying $6,000 to extend the warranty. The warranty expired. It's expensive equipment, and we certainly want to make sure that it is properly maintained and always functional in all of our cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I noticed the server is only going through 6/5/13. Can we get any longer than that, or?
The cost was prorated down, because after June of 2013, we'll no longer be able to warranty it through the company. At the five-year point, the server is done, as far as warranties go.
Okay. Thank you.
So that'll be a new decision at that time?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes.
Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M 6012?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 3712, matter of approving a resolution of the city council of the City of Berkeley approving a contractor agreement with Catherine Pounders as a public safety officer in the public safety department for a period of 9/24/12 through 9/23/13.
Is there a motion to approve R 3712?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa?
Council, without going into a lot of detail on this item, I'd like to inform everyone that basically what we're doing here is, we are asking the city council to consider a contract with this individual in order so that she can provide the following services. Number one, she will be functioning as a firefighter, a prisoner processor, and dispatcher until she becomes, and I say until instead of unless, because I know she's something that she's looking forward to doing, is to become a certified police officer. And so basically that is, those are her primary duties under this agreement. We also agree that if the council approves this contract, that she will be paid up to a maximum total of $42,800 per year, or $20.58 an hour. And we are to pay this individual on a bi-weekly basis. Obviously, there are some other things that we also consider for this position. This is just a contract position. We do not provide any fringe benefits at this time under this agreement. She is here with us this evening, and I'd like Chief Eschman to briefly introduce her and to perhaps elaborate a little further on the agreement. Perhaps I was a little too brief. Chief Eschman?
Catherine Pounders, council. Just to give you a little background on Mrs. Pounders, she has been with us for two years as a dispatcher, July of 2010. She also has functioned as our relief animal control officer. She is a state-certified firefighter, and is a volunteer firefighter here for us and in the City of Troy. She also, besides animal control dispatch, she is a police reserve with us. So she's versatile. She's very enthusiastic. The line of work apparently is in the DNA. She has done everything she can to reach certifications. She's a very capable person, a quick learner, obviously versatile by what I've told you she does here for us. She is a willing and prompt worker. Anytime we call her on a part-time basis, she does everything possible to come here. We've had a unique opportunity to observe her in various functions here, and we're very pleased with what we've seen. This will allow us to, in a cost-effective way, replace the person who last held this position, Officer Scott Smith, as you're aware, who is now in a police academy. He's been sworn as an officer, and he comes back in November, he'll be an officer on the road. So this position has gone unfilled for the past two months, and now we're ready to recommend to you and to request of you that she be granted this position.
I just want to say thank you. I love working here, and extremely appreciative for this opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one item. I want to, thank you, Your Honor. Just want to let the council know that we will be adding Ms. Pounders onto the insurance policies of workers' compensation and general liability.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Plaid Onson?
If Chief could just address, particularly for the people at home, why contract versus hire, direct hire?
This is a cost-effective way to fill a position. We've had it for a couple of years now. We have to have one person, one officer firefighter, inside at all times, in case there's a fire emergency. That person drives the fire truck to the scene. That person also functions as the backup dispatcher and prisoner processor. So this is a cost-effective way, at a cheaper rate, to have someone fill that position, thereby allowing regular officers to be on the road. And so we're confident now that this is more cost-effective even than it had been in the past, and that she's already a certified firefighter. She dispatches. There's usually now an eight-to-10 week training period to learn the dispatch function. There's zero training time for her. So there's just a little bit of prisoner processing that we'll have to go through, and then she's ready to go. She has been participating in a lot of fire training here already, as Councilman Blanchard can attest to. They've practiced together, and-
Yeah, I have trained with her, and she's very enthusiastic, so proud to have her on force with us.
That's a way of doing this under a contractor arrangement, and I'm grateful to the Public Safety Officers Union that they allow us to do this, that they have agreed to this cost-effective way of having the position filled.
Very good. Mr. Sessa?
Council, so you know as well, this contract is very similar to the one that we'd had with Officer Smith in the past. And our city attorney has reviewed this as well for your consideration, and he gives his approval.
My blessing.
Yes.
Very good. Any additional questions, discussion? Very good. Thank you very much for being here and for your two years of service. We look forward to another year of wonderful service with you in town. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R 3712?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 3812, matter of approving a resolution of the city council of the City of Berkeley in support of a regional transit authority.
Is there a motion to approve R 3812?
Motion to approve, R 3812.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Mr. Sessa?
Council, this was brought to my attention through Councilman Baker, and for council's consideration, although I support this completely. And I know that he's been working particularly very hard in this area with regards to hopefully developing a good and strong regional transit authority in this area. And I know that we're all working very hard towards that endeavor. This resolution simply supports that belief, Your Honor, and we do recommend it for your consideration. I don't know if Councilman Baker would like to add a little further on this issue. Councilman Baker, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. And yes, as the city manager has described, the resolution before us this evening is a series of statements declaring our support for the notion of a regional transit authority. It's something that we've spoken about on several occasions already. We've had opportunity to testify before the Senate Transportation Committee in support of this initiative as well. Essentially, what this states is that we would support a package of bills that are working its way through the legislative process that would create this transit authority. In essence, what any kind of an authority does when it crosses jurisdictions, and in particular, this covers multiple cities and even across counties, it creates a legal entity to make decisions and move forward with programs. This doesn't speak to a specific program. This doesn't speak to a specific type of transit, nor a type of funding, or any of those kinds of things. That is the work of the regional transit authority to lead those efforts, and we certainly would seek to be a part of that conversation as well. But before we can have those meaningful dialogues around how a regional transit system would work in the metro Detroit area, an authority needs to be put in place in order to implement any of the decisions that come forth. So again, what we're doing here is encouraging the state legislature and the governor's office to move forward with the package of bills that have been working their way through both the House and the Senate for quite some time. And that's what this puts forth in a nutshell.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Question for Councilman Baker. Has the geographic region been established on this, as far as what, we have a regional transit authority, but how big is the region?
Yeah, the, thank you, if I may. The four counties are covered in this, Wayne, Oakland, McComb, Washtenaw. The definition of the region, again, in a pro forma way, we don't actually have the authority in place to make any formal decisions, would be sort of an inverted triangle, if you will. If you can imagine, the heart of downtown is part of the apex, with a line coming up Woodward, a line going out Grashit, and then kind of coming across from, you know, across the north part, covering those three counties, and then an additional line which would work its way out through Dearborn and out to the airport, and then from there to Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor. So that conceptual framework has been discussed and proposed with several town hall meetings and articles and things. And so the details, where exactly would the stops be, what would be the mode of transit, you know, what would the fare structures be, and what would the times of the operations, who would maintain the cars, and things like that, those would be the specifics that the RTA, Regional Transit Authority, would oversee. But that's the rough geographics, if you can imagine, going out from, you know, up north to Mount Pleasant and back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Plaid Onson?
Just wanted to note, too, for anyone not particularly familiar with this concept, it's extremely common in metro areas to have a regional transit authority. The Chicagos and Boston's, et cetera, of the world have this in place. So we're a little behind in being able to implement a system based on not really having this structure in place.
Thank you. Anything additional? I think it is, it is very important that we have a regional authority that gives direction to an overall plan, rather than piecemeal segments that may not serve some areas very well, and ultimately become ineffective to providing the transportation that's needed across the region. So, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Baker for your tremendous work on this whole issue over the period of the last couple of years. It's not an easy concept, you know, for people to come to understand, the importance of the development that is likely to follow such a transit system. And then the authority to make it all work together is what we're about tonight. So on that thought, unless there's anything, anybody else want, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. And I would just like to amend that. I do appreciate the opportunity to help participate in those conversations, but certainly I'm far from alone on that. To know Councilmember Plaid Onson's been there, Mr. Kadekla, the city manager, our city planner, members of our planning commission, have all been involved in several of these sessions and workshops over the past several years. So although I've had an opportunity to help with some of these, certainly it has been a strong response from many across the city. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll then on R 3812?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 13?
Motion number M 6112, matter of approving delegates to the annual meeting of the Municipal Employees Retirement System, MERS, on October 3rd through the 5th, 2012, at the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel, Grand Rapids.
Is there a motion to approve M 6112?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protam Turbrack. Ms. Prince, Mr. Sessa?
Council, this is just a formal requirement that's necessary in order to allow these two individuals to make some decisions or take some actions at the meeting. And again, I strongly thank and appreciate their work. Our finance director, David Sabuda, will be there in attendance, and also the assistant to the city manager, Darshel Strickland-Love, will also be there to learn about the employees, Michigan Employee Retirement System, which is very, very important to the majority of the employees here in Berkeley. The MERS, as we call it, that is the pension system that's utilized by non-union members, although I do believe that the AFSMI group as well is a member of this pension system as well. We do recommend these two individuals, Your Honor, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions on this item? Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M 6112?
We're very pleased with that progress, and we're looking to see how and what ways we can continue to, to support that and broaden the ability to, to receive fresh local produce right down the street. So that's exciting. We've also clarified some expectations and a continued dialogue around a, a concept called wayfinding, and that's an important part of our master plan. Wayfinding, to call it science really doesn't do it justice, but essentially some of the things that you would identify in, in a wayfinding program is, is landmarks and, and indicators of which way to go to find important landmarks and things like that and, and things. So it's tremendous opportunity to understand how to describe and, and allow folks to find the many wonderful assets that we have across the city. So we're really excited about that work as well. On the transit front, the, there's a couple of committees that, that are involved with some excellent work. There's a Transit Oriented Development, TOD, group which continues to work on. There's a, there's a concept document that's being discussed by our planning commission, among others, to help move this forward, which is, which is great work. And last week's meeting, we received some materials from a, a series of architecture and engineering students from Lawrence Tech University, L T U. We had engaged them as part of the TOD, Transit Oriented Development work, to help us understand the characteristics of Woodward Avenue, and in particular, our stretch of it, essentially from Ferndale's border at 8 Mile up through Birmingham at 15 Mile. So that nice stretch of Woodward from 8 to 13, 8 to 15 Mile, 8 to 15 Mile. And like good graduate students do, they dug in deep and put on their thinking caps and creativity. I know the city manager was at one of the work sessions and, and had the opportunity to, to help sit in on a couple of those. I know Councilmember Platt Onson was in those as well. Tremendous dialogue, and they put together this, this material, which you hear, and hopefully the thud of this describes the, the volume of, of work involved in this. This is a very, it's a visual set of architectural and conceptual engineering drawings, everything from understanding the current situation and where we're at today, and then with some, some very creative and innovative concepts of significant nodes along the Woodward corridor that, that we would each all know and love. The nice thing about this is it really injects a fresh dose of creativity and energy into what sometimes can be seen as a mechanical and procedural endeavor to, to explore the right ways and options to, to do transit. To, to have the, the creativity in here is, is really exciting, and, and plus, I think, you know, above and beyond the quality of this, of this work is to engage future generations of architects and engineers in, in this kind of work. So as they talk to their friends and colleagues and family about this and, and years to come, as we see where we go with, with transit, they'll have a special connection to the work that we do, and I think those are meaningful opportunities to help educate and grow. So this particular document that I'm displaying here, what I'd like to do is I've, I've had the chance to study this material, and some of the concepts are, are really out there, and other ones are things that we could absolutely see as being meaningful additions to our, to our landscape. What I'd like to do is, is give the administration and council some opportunity to review this, like our, our, our planning commission to have an opportunity to study this. And as, as we've had a chance to review this, I think a safe final destination for this would be in our public library, so that everyone will have an opportunity to see and explore the kinds of things that we could do along Woodward from a transit perspective, and also to help celebrate and recognize the great work that this engineering and architecture class has done. So look forward to this. I don't know exactly the process of how we'll move this around, but it's, it's great material, and we're really pleased about that. And finally, it was a longtime news anchor, Dan Rather, who once said, "Americans will put up with anything provided it doesn't block traffic." Again, Americans will put up with anything as long as it doesn't block traffic. And it's only partially tongue-in-cheek that I offer that because there's a very important conversation coming up for us here in the city. For those of you that are watching this in real time or near real time, it's actually tomorrow, Tuesday, the 18th, here in this very room, will be, will be receiving and discussing in a work session capacity through the planning commission, traffic study. This council was, you know, wise enough, if I, if I may be so bold, to, to, to approve the work that our, our planner, Amy Vanson, put together, terrific work to get the, to get that proposal together. Traffic study was performed on Coolidge Highway, and so we'll hear the results of that traffic study and engage in conversation about its, its implications and intangibles and those kinds of things. So, you know, with, with safety and road design in mind in terms of traffic flow, convenience for the customers and shoppers, safety for the residents and the, the business owners, it's, it's an important conversation. And so if you have any opportunity to either engage us in person or to watch it on, on the TV, that'd be, that'd be great. It's an important, important topic. So great, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Steadman?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilmember Blanchard?
I have two things. A while back, I mentioned the fact that a Ferndale police officer had a child killed by a drunk driver. There is going to be, for the John Cleveland family, there will be a fundraiser this Thursday at Rosie O'Grady's in Ferndale. The family lost a three-year-old daughter. The mother who was driving the vehicle was severely injured, lacerated liver, lacerated spleen. She's doing better now, much better. The other children were hurt, and the husband was hurt. So I'm helping participate in a fundraiser to help them take care of some of their medical bills. That will be 6 o'clock this Thursday at Rosie O'Grady's.
In Ferndale?
In Ferndale, yes, yes. The other thing is, our fire department has an annual open house, so we have that. Normally, the first weekend in October, people are looking forward to that, but it's not going to be the first weekend in October. It's going to be the 29th of September. It's sneaking up on us real fast. So I want to get the word out, and I left a message for Casey today to see if we get that on the calendar.
Yes, sir.
We need to follow up on that because it's a very well-received program. The, the officers over there do a lot of work to put that together. We have all kinds of things for the, for the kids to do, and an educational component, where we show them what to do in a smoke-filled house with a smoke trailer and that sort of thing. So it's very important that we get the word out, and that those, those people that have young children, bring them around to look at the fire engines, go through the smoke house and see what's, what's happening, get a chance to squirt a little water, and learn all about firefighters with their gear on or not. Scary, they're, they're to, to help you, to be a friend. So again, that's, I think, Chief, is it 10 o'clock, it starts?
10 to 2.
10 to 2 on the 29th of September, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items with some upcoming Parks and Recreation. First, September 22nd, Parks and Rec will have their final family movie night of the year. It's supposed to, is set to begin at dusk, assuming the weather cooperates. That's coming up. And now that we are officially in the fall, Parks and Rec has a number of, of programs that are now beginning and begin in the next month or so, both for adults and youth. The best way, I mean, there, there are too many for me to, to read them all off. The best way is to go to our website, the City of Berkeley's website, and to click on the Parks and Recreation section on the right side of the page. It's their senior programs, their adult programs, their youth programs, all kinds of programs that are starting in the next month or so that, that you can certainly register for. As we mentioned earlier with the fun run, there is a Fall Festival at Our Lady of La Sallete Church this weekend that's right on Coolidge, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And on Saturday at 1:00, I will be leading or lending my expertise in the dunk tank. So I'm assuming that a number of residents and certainly students will be lined up at that point. It is supposed to be a little bit chilly, so I'm a little bit concerned. But that is Saturday at 1:00, so everybody who's not happy with me, there you go, Saturday at 1:00, line up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Platt Onson?
Just a couple of things, thank you. To follow up on what Councilmember Baker brought up in regards to the planning commission meeting, one thing that we've been talking about for a long time is what we can do about Coolidge. As I ran across the street from the public parking on one side to the atomic dog on the other side, because I needed some lunch, I thought, it's a good thing that I have the ability to run, or else I might be in trouble here. And, and to get to a crosswalk is very difficult from, from points where we actually do have public parking. So those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at, how we can address and, and how we can make Coolidge feel and function a little more like part of our downtown, how it can be safer for people of all ages and abilities. Not everybody can run across the street, and the rate, my knees are going pretty soon. I won't be able to either. So that's what we're going to be looking at, once again, tomorrow night. And then the fall tree planting is going on right now. So if you are interested in a tree at a fantastic rate for either the city property, which is between your sidewalk and the road, or it's available for private property as well, there's about a $10 difference in price. There's a huge range of trees available for anywhere from $55 to $95. There are smaller, more decorative trees. There are large, beautiful maples, and sort of all shapes and sizes for all different parts of your yard. If you're interested in that, the deadline for getting a tree, for putting in your order for a tree, is next Friday, and you should contact DPW at 248-658-3490. So by next Friday, if you want to participate in the fall tree planting program. Also, people always wonder why in the world you're thinking about planting a tree in the fall. It's actually the best time to plant a tree. It gives it its best chances at survival. It doesn't have to survive the, the summer heat, which of course, the summer would have been a little, a little brutal. So if you want to have a, a nice bright spring with a new tree in your yard, now's the time. And then last but not least, I just wanted to congratulate the chamber on a successful pub crawl. They put on a great event and had just a ton of people out, had some new venues involved, so just want to say congrats on a good job to them.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, I, I really don't have a lot to report today. The only thing I'd like to do is I'd like to recognize a student from Oakland University, and I sincerely hope I pronounce her name correctly as well. Her name is Sandra Bolano, and she is from Columbia. Sandra, if you don't mind, would you, would you step up just a little? Yes, please. I know I'm putting you on the spot here, so I apologize. You've come from such a long way, but she, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Bolano. I'm originally from Columbia. I'm a master in public administration student at the Oakland University. Being here is part of my local government class assignment. A completely new experience for me, very new, very excited, and I hope to get to know the city better. I'm going to work my project on the city of Berkeley, so I hope I do a good job and make justice to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you very much. So we are, she has chosen the city of Berkeley as her assignment, and, and so I'll be working with her as well to provide her with some insight and some information on this endeavor. I'm pretty sure we're going to get an A, so. But anyways, thank you for joining us, Sandra, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Of course you'll get an A. Our Oakland University students are exceptionally bright. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Turney?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Well, very good. I have just a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to send New Year's greetings to our Jewish residents in the city of Berkeley as they celebrate Rosh Hashanah and usher in the high holidays that will end with Yom Kippur in 10 days or so. As they celebrate these important holidays, they remind us that traditions are important for all of us, and they are anchors that are important in our society and in our community. Next item is congratulations to the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Tom Caldwell. He had the distinction of co-coaching the United States Paralympic basketball team that won third place or a bronze medal at the Paralympics in London a couple of weeks ago. So we are especially proud of that achievement for Tom, and I had the opportunity to watch one of the games on television, and I want to tell you that we also need to salute the passion of those athletes that triumph over great limitations, to put their heart and soul into those games. It is a great achievement that inspires, I think, all of us. Then I'd like as well to say a general thank you to the many residents who have sent me emails, and emails, I think, to my colleagues as well regarding the project at 12 Mile and Coolidge. We're grateful, of course, that the project is behind us, but we are especially pleased that our residents are pleased with the, with the finished product. So that makes the, the effort all worthwhile. Then I'd like to remind the residents down in the area of Woodward and Eaton that a traffic plan has been developed that we believe will resolve some of the difficulties that they have experienced over the period of the last few months. It takes a while to work out those kinds of details to the satisfaction of everyone. We're always trying to balance the quality of life for the residents with the opportunities for the business community, and I believe this new plan will accomplish that for our residents and for the business. And finally, as we celebrate Constitution Week, a couple of little, little tidbits here. Population of the United States today at noon was 314 million, 395,013. It is the 225th anniversary today of the signing of the Constitution in Philadelphia. Now, the Constitution is clearly one of our most precious documents, and the one thing we are reminded of when we, when we read it is, what protects us on one page may annoy us on another. In other words, the behaviors that, that are protected for us also protects behaviors of others that we might find personally objectionable. That is the genius of the document. It calls us to be tolerant and to be respectful. These values are timeless and indispensable, and may those values long be celebrated from coast to coast. And on that thought, Ms. Prince, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Steadman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Platt Onson. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Platt Onson?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
September meeting, 17th of the 34th Council is adjourned.